This conference will now be recorded.
It is 6:03 and we are here tonight for the Roswell Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Today is Tuesday, March 26th at 6:03 PM. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Chair Story.
Here.
Commissioner Aguilar.
Here.
Commissioner McDaniel.
Present.
Commissioner Lassard. Commissioner Henderson. Commissioner Holman.
Here.
Commissioner Gutierrez is absent. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Next, we have our swearing in by Commissioner Henderson of staff and members of the audience, please.
Please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, under penalty of perjury. Say aye. May be seated.
Thank you, Steve. Next, we have approval of tonight's agenda, which is the March 26th meeting. Is there any changes or comments on tonight's agenda? If none, I'd accept a motion.
Second.
We got a motion by Saul and a second by Jesse to approve the agenda for the night. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes on the agenda. Next is the approval of the minutes from our February 27th, 2024 meeting. Are there any changes or comments on the minutes? Being none, I'd accept a motion. We have, what do we have here? Okay, we'll do, we'll do, motion by Jenna and a, and a, second by Greg. To approve the minutes from the February 27th meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. Next, we move on to our public hearing items. First up is case number 24-007, which is a SUP, a special use permit for, in the R3 residential zoning district, to ensure school complies with the state of New Mexico requirements for accreditation. Meredith, you want to speak first?
Thank you, Chair Story Commissioners.
You want us to waive the reading of the finding of facts first? That would be good. Can I have a motion to waive the reading of the finding of facts and land use and zoning considerations, please?
No move.
We have a motion by Jesse and a second by Steve to waive the reading of the finding of facts and land use and zoning considerations for case 24007. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, now we have Meredith. But if you'd like to sit down for a minute, you don't have to stand up behind her. Okay, you're more than welcome. We'll call you up next.
Good evening, Chair Story Commissioners. First up, item number one on the public hearing is item, it's zoning case 24-007 SUP, a request for a special use permit in the R3 residential zoning district to ensure the existing private school at 1405 North Sycamore Avenue complies with state of New Mexico requirements for accreditation. Here you have a staff photo of the Emmanuel Lutheran Church and School. Here's a assessor map and a zoning map. You can see it's an R3 surrounded by a lot of vacant land and a little bit of commercial development on the north side of. Boulevard and also the Spring River Apartments is down the street on the other side of Sycamore. Excuse me, if you're online, please mute yourself for now. The comprehensive master plan shows this as a mixed-use area for, in the preferred land use scenario map. As of today's date, the Planning and Zoning Division has received zero written protests and zero inquiries pertaining to this case. Based on the land use and zoning considerations, findings of fact, conclusions of law, regulations established in the zoning ordinance materials provided and testimony received, I'm asking the Planning and Zoning Commission to make a motion and vote on this case 24-007 SUP. And Bud Kunkel is here to speak in favor of this case. I stand for questions.
Any questions for Meredith? Thank you, Meredith. Anyone speaking, wishing to speak in favor of this case, please step forward, state your name and address, please.
Bud Kunkel, Sixth Mercedes Court, Roswell, New Mexico. I'm here to present this on behalf of Emmanuel Lutheran Church and School. School's been there about 16 years. And if you look closely, and Meredith brought this to my attention, so good job, staff. Thank you. There is not the word "school" in R3 zoning. You've got a lot of other things in there, but not "school." And if we, if the church and school intend to get state accreditation, being proactive, we decided that it would be a good idea to ensure that we have a special use permit allowing the school there because we didn't want the state coming back and saying, well, you've got a school there, but it's not in zoning, so shut it down. So that's why we're here today.
Any questions of Bud?
Pretty simple.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of case 24007? Anyone in there in the audience wishing to speak against case 24007? Anybody in against it? Being none, I would accept a motion, please.
Conclusion of law, surrounding land uses, regulations established in the zoning ordinance, materials presented, and testimony received. I make a motion to approve case 24-007 SUP.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Jenna and a second by Steve to approve case number 24-007. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Being none, it's passed. Thank you, Bud. See ya.
You too.
Next, we have case number 24-008, which is a request for a zone change from ETC RS Reserve Rural Suburban to City of Roswell I-1 Light Industrial for a 10-acre annexation into the City of Roswell municipal boundary. Could I have a motion to waive the reading of the finding of facts, please?
No move.
We have a motion by Saul and a second by Jenna to waive the reading of the finding of facts and land use and zoning considerations for case 24008. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes, six to zero. Meredith?
Thank you, Chair Story Commissioners. Item number F2 is zoning case 24-008 ZOC. It's a zone change request from ETZ RS Rural Suburban to City of Roswell I-1 Light Industrial for a 10-acre annexation tract. As you can see, you've seen this case before when it came before you for annexation. The city council did approve the annexation, so now it's before you for the zone change. Here is an aerial from the Chavez County Assessors map and the zoning map. As you can see, there's Light Industrial, city-zoned Light Industrial in the surrounding neighborhood on both sides of Brasher Road. These are staff photos for the property under consideration for the zone change. Looking across from the FedEx building. And you can see that corridor there. The building on the first photo is Legendary Services and the owner of the property under consideration wishes to build something similar to that. Different type of business, but in the same kind of industrial use. This is the excerpt from the comprehensive master plan, preferred land use scenario map. As you can see, the preferred land use scenario is Light Industrial. On January 23rd, 2024, City of Roswell Planning and Zoning Commission voted six to zero to recommend approval of zoning case 23-007 annexed to city council. And on March 14th, 2024, Roswell City Council approved ordinance 24-02 to annex 10-acre tract into municipal boundary, which was the zoning case 23-007 annex. As of today's date, the Planning and Zoning Commission, or the Planning and Zoning Office has received zero written protests and zero inquiries regarding zoning case 24-008 ZOC. And we request, staff requests that you review and make a motion and vote on zoning case 24-008. I'll just read it. Okay, so, based on land use and zoning considerations, findings of fact, conclusions of law, regulations established in the zoning ordinance materials provided and testimony received, Planning and Zoning Commission is requesting make a motion and vote on zoning case 24-008 ZOC. I stand for questions and Juan Carrion is in the audience to speak in favor.
Any questions, Commissioners?
Just a little curious, is this a matter of procedure that, that we have to do the zoning change after the annexation? Is this something that could have been wrapped into one?
It has to be annexed first and then the zone change occurs.
Lot of excessive steps. Thank you, Meredith.
Thank you, Meredith. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of case 24-008? Please come forward, state your name and address, please.
Yes, I'm Juan Carrion, 25 Heli Circle, that's where I live, Roswell. As you guys know, I'm back again, third time, so, I mean, any questions or anything, I'm here to answer.
We admire your persistence.
Really do. You've really hung in there. I wish you the best in your business.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thanks, sir. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this case? Being none, anybody in the audience against this case? Anybody wishing to speak against this case? Being none, I'd accept a motion?
I make a motion to wa, oh, I'm sorry. Based on the land use and zoning considerations, finding of facts, conclusion of law, surrounding land uses, regulations established in the zoning ordinance, material presented and testimony received, make a motion to approve case number 24-008 ZOC.
Greg? Yeah, we have a motion by Jenna and a second by Greg to approve case number 24-008, the zone change. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. It is passed. Sir, you're welcome to stick around or you're welcome to leave.
Run, you're good.
Yeah, it's been a long road. Next, we have case number 24-006, a CAN, which is a request for approval of a variance for property in a C4 with respect to C2 underlying zoning requirement, variance to residential distance requirements, zone change to CCAN, and conditional use permit to operate an adult use retail cannabis establishment. I'd accept a motion to waive the reading of finding of facts, please.
Second.
Greg? We have a motion by Greg and a second by Saul to waive the reading of the finding of facts and land use and zoning considerations for case 24007. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next, we have Meredith.
Chair Story Commissioners, item number three is 24, case 24-006, CAN, a request for approval of variances, zone change to CCAN and a CUP to operate an adult use retail cannabis establishment. I'll go over each of these. In the zoning case, there's a request for two variances. So the first variance is for a property in the C4 with respect to C2 underlying zoning requirements. And what that is all about is in the chapter 27 of the municipal code, the cannabis chapter. The code was written to allow cannabis established, retail cannabis establishments in the C2 zoning district. In your packet, you can see where the zoning ordinance allows anything in the C2 to also be allowed in the C4 zoning ordinance. I just put that in there. I just, and I put everything in here from the cannabis chapter as well, so that you could actually see the language. So that's on page 43 of your packet. The second variance is a variance, a request for a variance to the residential distance requirements. Again, the code specifies a 300-foot distance from the establishment to residential. There's residential directly behind the alley of this one. And that seems to be fairly common in our city. There's a request for a zone change to CCAN also as specified in the, or the chapter 27 of the municipal code related to cannabis. The zone change to CCAN, CCAN is a floating zone. It's, it's commercial cannabis zone. It's a floating zone. It's just applied to individual properties where residential, or excuse me, commercial cannabis is, is approved. And then also a conditional use permit, which is in appendix F of your packet. And this is all to operate an adult use retail cannabis establishment at 1407 West Second Street. Here you can see staff photos of the property under consideration at 1407 West Second Street. This used to be the Tokay Beaded Art Gallery. It does have onsite parking and ample expansion area in the back, but there is paved parking toward the front with one access point to Second Street. This is a map of the Chavez County Assessors map. You can see the surrounding land uses. You can see the Monterey Shopping Center across the street and also commercial properties on the east and west. And as you can see, the zoning map, you can see there's a commercial corridor all along Second Street. And you can also see the residential zoning district to the north on the other side of the alley. The comprehensive master plan shows a property in a commercial corridor on West Second Street as well. As of today's date, the Planning and Zoning Division has received zero written protests. And I don't remember receiving any inquiries pertaining to this case. We do have several audience members present who may wish to speak in regard to this case. Based on the land use and zoning considerations, findings of fact, conclusions of law, regulations established in the zoning ordinance, city ordinance article 20, or should be, it should say chapters 27, materials provided and testimony, Planning and Zoning Commission is requesting to make a motion and vote on a recommendation to city council pertaining to zoning case 24-006 CAN. And when you do make your motion, please put it in the affirmative. If you wish to vote against it, please vote no or nay. I stand for questions.
Any questions for Meredith or the other staff? James, Jessica, you guys got any comments or?
Leonard Salgado is here to speak in favor of the case.
All right, we'll get to that in a minute. Any, any questions of Meredith? Any? Steve? Everybody good? Thank you, Meredith. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of case 2406? Please state your name and address, please.
That would be me. I'm Leonard Salgado. My address is 335 San Pedro, Northeastern Albuquerque. I am here representing OCC ABQ LLC, also known as Oasis Cannabis. And I'm involved in the, the business development and expansion for the organization. I am proud to represent the organization because actually, one of the, one of the members of the company actually is a longtime resident of Roswell and his family has operated a very successful business here for over 40 years. So we definitely have some ties to the community. We're grateful certainly for the opportunity to expand our cannabis business in Roswell. And we do, we're doing this actually through a merger with an existing dispensary operator known as Southwest Organic Producers, and they are located at 610 West Second Street. So through this merger, we will close that particular location and move to our proposed location site at 1407 West Second Street, which is of course approximately eight blocks to the west of, of the present location. So we believe that this is a very beneficial move for the company. And certainly, we recognize that it also, I think, is, is in keeping with the preservation of the historical district for Roswell. So I think we accomplished a couple of things by, by moving just west. Certainly, we want to thank Meredith for developing the, the report and, and the help of her staff. And certainly, we have provided with her, to her, any supporting documentation. And with, with that, we certainly are prepared to comply with her conditions of approval in accordance with the ordinances that have been developed and approved by the City of Roswell and, and this committee. I would like to share just a couple of things and then certainly, I'm open to any questions that you may have. This location is very important to us in many different ways. And it's, and we're very excited and anxious to, to move into this facility. Through our merger with Southwest Organics, this new location will serve actually as a southeastern New Mexico regional hub because this facility will support other dispensaries that come about through this merger in Clovis, in Portales, and also Hobbs. So we see a large expansion in the, in the southwest, I'm sorry, southeast area of the state. We will employ approximately 35 new staff members that will be joining us at this facility. We'll be certainly paying a competitive wage of $15 an hour to start. After 90 days, those employees will be eligible for a salary increase and they'll also be able to participate in the company's other benefits such as medical, dental, and vision care. And they will be eligible after 90 days. These new employees, by the way, will join our current team of 125 people that we have primarily in the Albuquerque and Farmington area. So as I said, this, this, this facility is very, very important to us as we look at, at regional development of this area. This new facility will also be, by the way, a training facility for, again, the new employees that will be joining us from this part of the state. In addition, very quickly here, this, this location will serve, to also serve the over 2,500 medical cannabis patients that currently reside in Chavez County. So that's, that's very important to us. And if approved, this location in Roswell will add to the total dispensary network that we have throughout the state, which will be 17 in New Mexico. So let me just kind of wrap things up here a little bit by saying that, as I'm sure all of you are aware, our, our industry is very highly regulated from the state level, from the municipality level, from every level you can probably think of. We are certainly an industry that gets a lot of attention. And we're used to that. And being, being that, that being the case, we are very compliance, we're a very compliance-driven organization. We have to be very transparent in the way we do business. So from the Department of Health to the Cannabis Control Division, to every municipality that we operate in, we are very, very transparent. And I just want you all to know that that's just the way we do business. So let me just summarize very quickly and just say that with the history we already have in Roswell, we're looking to just build on that. We, we look to build on that through our dispensary here. We want to create jobs. We want to create growth opportunities for the team members that will join us here. Certainly, it goes without saying, every time that we make a sale at the adult use level, there's tax receipts that we collect, reoccurring receipts that we hope will, will help the community benefit from. Lastly, we certainly want to bring the very best and the most effective cannabis products to our patients and our customers at the most affordable price possible. And I think the community is going to appreciate that. We certainly want to create a professional and safe dispensary environment and really work with anyone, anyone who is interested in getting educated about the medical benefits of using cannabis. And I guess I'll, I'll sum it up by saying, we're, we're looking forward to being and continuing to be business partners in the community and give back to the City of Roswell and to Chavez County whenever possible. So that's our story. We're sticking to it. We certainly appreciate the opportunity and I'm open for questions that you may have.
Commissioners, any questions? I think we're good.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you all.
Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this case? Anybody else? Is there anybody online wishing to speak in favor of this case? Being none, is there anybody wishing to speak against case number 24006? Yes, sir. Please come forward and state your name and address, please.
My name is Gene Dow. I am with Pecos Valley Broadcasting Company. Our business is at 317 West Quay in Artesia. And we own the building right next door to this proposed location at 1405 West Second Street. And if on your map, that is location number 27. What we wanted to make the commission aware of is that we have a tenant that rents that building from us. That operates a private business. It is a boxing training facility for children. It is called Baron Boxing. The owner of it is Silver Baron. They have children as young as six years of age that take classes and work out at that facility. Sometimes, whether permitting, the workouts are on the outside of the building and he'll have anywhere from 15 to 20 kids. It'll be a part of his boxing program and his training program. The kids currently participate in those classes. The kids currently participate in those classes at Baron Boxing. So I want to bring that to attention to the commission as looking at Section 2765 A1 being near schools and other facilities that involve children, things like that. So we would, we would urge the commission to consider not approving this particular variance at this particular location due to the fact that we have the boxing school that's in the building right next door to this proposed location.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of this gentleman?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Meredith, is that a consideration? When it talks about being close to schools and things, does it talk about uses by students or children or?
Yeah, if you look in your packet, I believe the language is stated, so.
I've been really.
Chair Story Commissioners, it's on page 44. And it talks about prohibited locations and activities, Section 27-65A1. No cannabis-related businesses shall be permitted within 300 feet of all schools, parks, churches, recreation facilities, childcare facilities, military facilities, senior care facilities, retirement facilities, and medical facilities.
Any other questions or discussion? Anybody in the audience, I mean, wishing to speak against this case or online against this case? Staff, any questions, comments of staff or any of the applicant or anybody? Yes, sir. Could you state your name again so we know he's talking, please?
It's Leonard Salgado. The Section A, I believe, to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community's most vulnerable populations, particularly children. I, I, I would like to state that as an organization, again, we appreciate the fact that we are highly regulated from every state and municipality department that you could probably think of, but including the Department of Health. And we're, we're very sensitive certainly to particularly children in the community. I, I can assure you that we take every public safety measure, not only in, inside our facility, but outside of our facility. There's, there's cameras throughout the interior and exterior of the facility. So we are taking every measure to ensure that the safety of our, our customers, of our patients, of our employees is, 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 is well observed and taken care of to the best of our ability. We, we're a good neighbor wherever, wherever we operate. And we are, we'll do everything in our power to make sure that we are sensitive to, to our neighbors and whatever activity they are involved in. So I just want to state that for the record, please.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, questions?
I was gonna say, before we make a motion on this, just for full disclosure.
Thank you. In order to remind anybody or whoever makes the motion, that this motion is to go to the City Council for a recommend of either approval. I guess the motion can't be for denial because you want an affirmative motion. How do you make a recommendation of no recommendation or a motion of no recommendation? That's our choices, right? Recommend approval, denial, or no, come forth with no recommendation?
Chair Story Commissioners, that's correct. You can make a recommendation of approval, denial, or no recommendation.
Recommendation to denial is not in the affirmative. Isn't that correct? We'll take it one step at a time. Whoever makes the motion, make it for approval, and then we'll see what goes from there. Except a motion.
Based on the land use and zoning considerations, finding of facts, conclusion of law, surrounding land uses, regulations established in the zoning ordinance, Article 27 of the Municipal Code, materials presented and testimony received, I make a motion to recommend an approval of zoning case 24-006 CAN to City Council.
Got a motion by Jana and a second by Steve to recommend to the City Council approval of case number 24-006 CAN. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign?
Aye.
Do we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Aguilar.
Or against.
Or.
How do you want us to state that, Meredith?
Yes or no?
Or approval, correct?
Yes. Commissioner McDaniel.
No.
Commissioner Lassard. Commissioner Henderson. Commissioner Holman.
No.
Chair Story.
Yes.
There's four in the affirmative, two in the negative. The motion carries.
Sir, you have the right to appeal to City Council, even though it does go to City Council. And we've had this discussion before. You're more than welcome to appear at the City Council. No, never mind.
Just to clarify on that, this is just a recommendation to City Council. So you're welcome to come to City Council and speak. But City Council will then vote, and then at that point, you could go through with the appeal process.
And appeal our.
There's really nothing to appeal at this point.
That clear? Okay, that case has gotten a 4-2 approval from the commission. Thank you all very much. You're welcome to stick around, or you're welcome to leave, whatever you'd like to do. It's pretty exciting stuff we do here on cannabis. Oh, I'm sure, probably a little quicker. All right, now we have other business. Introducing other business, Commissioner Five Position. Meredith, might as well go over five and six while you're up there. Do we need a motion on these?
Chair Story Commissioners, item G1, Other Business, P&amp;Z Commissioner Position Five. We do have two applicants who've submitted their applications to the city clerk. Alicia Gilmore, who you heard from last month during the public comment period. And then also Todd Taylor is here in the audience with us.
Was that two total for both positions or two total for the first position?
There's a position, well, there's position five and position six. The Planning and Zoning Commission may make a recommendation to the mayor and city council on both of these positions. So you heard from Alicia Gilmore last month. I believe she may be online. And Todd Taylor is in the, in the room here if you'd like to hear from Mr. Taylor.
Come on up, Todd.
I'm Todd Taylor. I live at 2617 Coronado Drive. I know several of you on the commission. It's good to see you again. I, I've done business with Meredith, and we were talking the other day when I was, had a question for her. And she said, I mentioned to her that I'd like to serve as a Planning and Zoning Commissioner if it was possible. And then she said, well, put your application in, and here I am. Just a little bit about me, most of you probably don't know. My family's been in Roswell forever. I'm born and raised in Roswell. My father was a contractor and developer, so was my brother. And I'm doing a little bit of development too, mostly selling land. My background is in, basically, in the real estate business. Been the, as the president of the Roswell Modern Realtors in 2021 during the pandemic. So we did a lot of great things. But I just had the opportunity, and I would like to serve if it's possible. Do you have any questions for me? I'd be happy to take them.
Any questions to Todd?
Have any questions? I think Todd will be great, though.
Thanks.
I think really, I'm not saying that in a good or bad way, but our perspective, what we deal with every day, gives us good insight for stuff like this.
Thank you, Todd. Meredith, do we, is there any reason or is there any restrictions on where you live or anything? Like council or anything for five or six or?
There's no restriction except they must live within the city limits. And this is a recommendation to the mayor and city council.
Do you want us just to make a recommendation for a person for five and a person for six?
That would be perfect.
Are there motions or just one motion?
Two motions, please, one for each position.
Make a motion for Todd Taylor to fill position number five for the term of 4/1/24 to 3/31/2028.
Second.
We have a motion by Jesse and a second by Jana for Todd Taylor to fill position Commissioner Five Position. All in favor, signify for a recommendation to council or I guess to the mayor? For Commissioner Five Position, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. It's our favorable recommendation.
I'd like to make a motion for position number six for Alicia Gilmore to fill it for 4/1/2024 to 3/1/2028.
Second.
A motion by Jesse and a second by Jana for Alicia Gilmore to fill Commissioner Six Position. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. She sees a favorable recommendation. Any public comments? I think there's nobody out there but Todd. Is there anybody online? Any announcement?
Chair Story, the reporter from the Roswell Daily Record, Terry Harper, is online. But doesn't, doesn't want to speak.
Anything else? We are adjourned. It is 6:48. Jesse and I enjoyed it. Good luck, you guys. Oh, yeah, you bet. Yeah.